At this time, we'll call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting that was held on January 28, 2020. The council does have the minutes of that meeting. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig, to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda include a joint powers agreement between the state of Minnesota, BCA, and the city of Marshall, Marshall Police Department, the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. We have a payment application to Magni Construction wastewater treatment facilities. We have a payment invoice to Bolton and Mink, and both of these require council action because of the funding source. Wastewater treatment facility improvement, payment invoice to American Engineering Testing, similar to the previous two. Consider the approval of the temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purpose of a separate discussion?
Member four.
Any other item?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ, to approve the items on the consent agenda discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Four, the wastewater treatment facility improvement project, the payment application to Magni Construction. Jim?
I just would like to have an update of how it's going. I think it'd be good for the public to hear what, you know, how's it going out there?
Sure, yeah. I don't have a detailed update, but I'll say that they've done a considerable amount of work on the sludge storage tank and facility that they're constructing out there, the concrete cell to store more sludge. They got a lot of the walls poured for that. The only thing that's missing is the roof for that structure. That's part of why this pay application is as large as it is. There's a lot of concrete payment costs in there. They're starting to get a lot of materials delivered to site, and that's also reflected in this pay application, some of the equipment replacements kind of getting underway. So it's going well. I think they're on time with where they want to be. This project does have a very long and extended timeframe, and the purpose of that is to make sure the contractor has enough time to do the improvements while our plant remains operational and uninterrupted. So it's going well.
Any questions?
Jason.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve, to approve the payment application discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Nine, consider the approval of the amended investment policy. This has been discussed and considered by the Ways and Means Committee, and presenting this will be a net storm.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The current investment policy hasn't been updated since its inception back in 2015. So myself and finance staff has done quite a bit of work to get it updated, as it's been quite a few years. The process that we took was we took Anoka County, their finance director, he is very well-known, the National GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. And so he's very, very knowledgeable in the investment world. And then we also took, the National GFOA also has policies and best practices, and so they had a template for investment policies. So we kind of took the two to make sure that we had all of our regulations and everything that were met in this policy. As the mayor did mention, we did discuss this in detail at the Ways and Means last Monday. Mainly, the update is making sure that we are in compliance with state statute and other regulations, and also being able to expand how we're investing our money. So there were added securities in order for us to be able to invest differently, in order to maximize our return. And also, our advisors, it wasn't well-written in here as to who we can and can't use for investment advisors. So that was kind of another major change that we had. Let's see, from, since the version that was in the council packet, there were a few updates, and I did provide a redline copy to everyone here. So the first one, we, it talked about, sorry, I have the wrong copy here, the delivery versus payment method, which we are removing because the city of Marshall does not follow that. It's, what it basically means is that anytime we get bond proceeds, we put them into a separate bank account, and the city of Marshall does not follow that, nor do we really want to have multiple bank accounts open for that respect. So we decided to remove that. And a couple of the federal agency issues that were in the old policy that I did not remove until we had a second reviewer catch it. The three that are being removed, they don't exist. And then we also wanted to add the Freddie Mac in there because it's a great, great way to invest money securely. And then the final change in there, on page five, we're striking that sentence, the investments may be scheduled maturities, just because it really didn't make sense under this, underneath this category, and it really wasn't telling us a whole lot. So we, I did go through and have two different investment advisors review our policy and give us feedback. Some of them I had prior to council, I think, for Ways and Means, I think I had it. And then our second reviewer, I didn't touch base with her until yesterday, and that, these were her recommended changes. She thinks this policy has, is actually very, very well-written, and she would actually like to use it in the beginning of March when she meets with another city, because she thinks it's a great example that other cities would like to use.
Okay. Thank you, Annette. Questions or first off, input from the Ways and Means Committee?
Just to say that, you know, Ways and Means did review this, and then we had an advanced copy of this one ahead of the meeting, so that if there were any questions, we could bring it up or pull it if necessary. I think, you know, you others can join in too, but I think general consensus was, this was handled very well. A lot of study went in, a lot of comparisons to other cities, a lot of input, and really, this was initiated by our finance department in an effort to really get the most out of the dollars that we do have in trying to get the best interest. Our previous investment policy, which I think I sat on that one back in 2015, so kind of remember part of it, is, you know, pretty, was pretty conservative at that point, trying to make sure, you know, a lot of emphasis on maintaining the principle without a lot of involvement, so there was a lot of just safety deposit, CDs that were purchased. And at the time, that was okay, but things have changed a lot in the last five years. So we still have a very safe investment policy. It's to preserve the principle, but we can now put dollars in in a few different areas and milk a little bit more interest rate out of it. So just thanks to the finance department for pulling this out, so.
Okay. Any other input?
Mayor, I would just like to echo John's comment, and thanks to Annette and all the
staff for their diligence and their work in getting this done. I really appreciate it.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Russ, seconded by John. Discussion? If there is no discussion, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. Motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Ten. This is the South Forest Street reconstruction project. The action would be to consider the resolution receiving the feasibility report and calling for a hearing on the improvement. City Engineer, Director of Public Works, Jason Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is a reconstruction project scheduled for the summer along South Forest Street from Country Club Drive to Elaine Avenue. It is complete reconstruction, so water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer replacement, as well as street surfacing. At this point in time, with the feasibility report, we scoped the project to include sidewalks on both sides of the road. Currently, today, there's sidewalk on the west side only and not on the east side, but per department policy, we start with scoping in sidewalk on both sides, and we have the conversation with the council about whether that's what we want to do. So we started with sidewalk, adding sidewalk on the east side. We're also proposing to remove the painted on-street bike lanes and replace them with an eight-foot-wide shared-use path on the west side of the road. That would link up down near Camden with existing bike trail that runs parallel with Country Club Drive. Cost estimate at this point, we have about $3.6 million on the cost, including engineering. It's a preliminary estimate, and I would expect that at our next council meeting, when we have the public hearing, we have maybe a little tighter number, but that should be pretty close. Lot of dollars in utility replacement on this cost, specifically storm sewer is going to be pretty expensive. It's a big drainage area, and it's a very underserved drainage area, so there's a lot of cost there. I think that's what I've got for now. We're also proposing to realign Camden Drive with South Forest. We plan to make that intersect at a perpendicular angle to South Forest. So I would entertain any questions that council may have.
Questions? Russ?
Jason, as you know, and I'm just going to go on the record, I'm opposed to the, not opposed to the project, but approached to the specs. I've talked to residents, they don't want that street narrowed from 45 to 41. It's a heavily-traveled street. And, and the other thing is the sidewalk, you know, and, and I know my fellow council members at the meeting the other day, they said, well, we have maintenance issues, the cost factor, you know, we're going to be saving money by going from a 45 to a 41, but we also have an increase in cost if we have to maintain that trail on the west side. And I can almost guarantee you that Preston right now is saying, I don't have enough help, and I don't have enough equipment, and it takes four days to get the trails and the bike paths and everything done now. So if he has to take care of this whole stretch on South Forest Street, I just know that he's probably going to come before this council and say, I need more help and I need more equipment. So we got to compare apples to apples, and you said a sidewalk, and I asked you to check today, and I don't know if you found that out. I know we have an ordinance, and I know we have, that we want to put sidewalks and new developments, and, and when we do major construction like this, but I asked you to check Donita Avenue, and I'm not sure if we did a major construction there or not, because there are sidewalks on neither side of that street. So, and, and on the east side, I, you know, there's, as you and I discussed also, there are some, should I say, things that are, that are concerning to us, concerning to city staff. And again, I just want the public to be aware, made aware of that fact. I know we had one meeting, I was not made aware of it for some reason, I don't know why, and it was very limited attendance from what you told us, right? And I'm guessing that you'll probably have future meetings, but from what I'm hearing from my constituents on Forest Street, and, and it's a heavily-traveled street leading out to Forest Street, or leading out to the bypass, excuse me, and they just would not like to see that street narrowed. So I'm just telling you what my people say.
Mayor, may I respond to?
Yes.
Councilman, you touched on a few good points that I probably should have summarized. We are proposing a narrowing of the street. We met with PIT last week, so what Russ is referring to, or Councilman's referring to, is some items that we did talk about. So we, currently, it's give or take about a 45-foot-wide road. We're proposing to narrow it to 41 feet. We feel that by taking 10-foot width of bike trail off of the street, the four-foot narrowing would maybe have a lesser impact, that the folks might not notice it so much. The road might feel wider, even though in effect we're narrowing it. So purpose is mostly to save costs and also better fit sidewalk and shared you'd pass with, path within the right-of-way. So that's kind of the purpose of narrowing the street. We'll reduce assessments, reduce city cost, and then reduce city long-term maintenance. And then lastly, the other item that was touched upon is that there were six property owners that showed up to the public informational meeting that we had at MMU. We sent it to all affected property owners on the project. I think we may have missed some council member invites, and we'll rectify that next time. But there was a petition circled because they'd gotten wind of the project, and I think 10 property owners on the east side of the road signed a petition to not have sidewalk installed in front of their homes, where they currently do not have it today. So I'll share that information, and when we come back in two weeks for a public hearing, I will put that petition that we received in your packet, so you can have that as well.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any other discussion items? And again, the action item is to call for the public hearing.
I do, and I know, and I, as Russ speaks, Councilmember Schaefer and I have talked endlessly about sidewalks. Sidewalks build communities. And I know the city of Marshall years ago voted for us to put sidewalks on all streets. I don't, I know that was-
I believe it was in 1991.
Correct. And it's like, we want sidewalks not in our neighborhood. What folks need to realize is sidewalks increase their property values. You know, I look at my, my block, my area I live in, we all have sidewalks. We meet on the sidewalks. Our neighborhood kids play on the sidewalks. You know, the sidewalks bring your, your community together. Yes, there are maintenance, you got to take care of them in the wintertime, but I think at the end of the day, sidewalks will increase your value. And I, and I know that right now, I think there's a shared cost with the city on the sidewalks, and I believe Dennis has said we're looking at the assessments to maybe, you know, change that, which I think would be good. I think the city should cover the cost of installing the sidewalks, and the homeowners maintain them. But I think it's imperative we go back to what the citizens wished years ago, and we start putting sidewalks in. By getting away from these sidewalks, I think we hurt our community, so.
Other input?
Jason, so, and new neighborhoods, what is the standard with those streets, then?
That's kind of a loaded question, but I would say historically, over many years in past practice in Marshall, state aid routes such as this were about 45 feet back a curb to back a curb, and other residential routes were commonly 40 feet from back to back, give or take. There are some that are narrower, and there may have been certain exceptions at the time, but that was sort of a, maybe a different time. Now, now the general practice is to try to do your best to right-size the street for what your, what your use is, your traffic volumes, your parking, no parking, what's there. And we're just trying to be responsible with the width of road that we're putting back out on the road, out in the neighborhood, and try not to waste money. That's all we're trying to do. There's nothing wrong with putting a 44-foot road or a 45-foot road back in. We just think that the residents may not notice much of a difference with a 41, and it'll save them in the pocketbook.
Thank you.
Any other input? John?
Just a comment in regards to the sidewalks. I'm, I would like to hear what the cost is on the sidewalk, just to know what that is when we get into that. So I guess I'm more in favor of continuing with the plan as you have it, just to see the cost. I'm undecided at this point as far as, you know, do we put in sidewalks the entire way or not, because I know we've got into that, a lot of discussion, a lot of times on sidewalks. I've heard some pros on it, and I've heard some cons on it. But I think to know the cost, and especially since we've got a park in there, and, you know, primarily between the two streets, and I think it's, what is it? It's Thomas and Catherine, you know, on the park side of it, so we get access in there. We put some extra walkways through the park, and it'd be crazy not to tie that in at least some means of assessing, accessing the, the park for wheelchairs and strollers and things like that. So to me, I'd like to at least continue to see what the costs are involved and what the design would look like, but I'm going to reserve any, you know, opinion one way or the other until afterwards.
So if it satisfies, then maybe for the next meeting, when we come forward with the hearing, I can try to have a estimated cost for the sidewalk on the east side of the road? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. For me, that would be what I'd give an idea on what that is. And just, you know, and I don't know to what extent you go through on that, if you look at it and see where it would lay against the houses. I know, I don't know of any, you know, there may be some very close homes in this one. I know in other neighborhoods, we ended up being very close to a house or somebody's window or whatever, and that's not always a great thing either, so.
The bigger design concerns on this particular corridor is there's a gas pressure relief facility, or regulator facility in the right-of-way there that needs to be relocated if we're going to put sidewalk there, that, or we need to try to swerve around it. There's some trees and bushes and some landscaping work that would be disrupted as well. So there's those types of concerns.
And maybe just, you know, basically in pencil, if you know what it's going to look like, without getting a lot of, getting too involved in it, but I think with your estimations, it shouldn't be too bad to come up with an idea on what we're talking about per foot or whatever, and at least have that information.
We can do that.
Any other input?
Yeah, just as we lead into this, I just want to remind council and residents that we did do an ordinance, and the city has an ordinance that says we put in sidewalks. As with any other ordinance, and I think we've stated this on other things as the council, if we're not going to enforce an ordinance or adhere to it, then why do we have it? We claim that we're a pedestrian-friendly community, we claim that we care about that, and then yet we take action to try to make excuses why we don't want to do it. And I think that's really kind of sad, because I think that's short vision for our, for our constituents and for the community, so I, for one, short of some unforeseen issue, support sidewalks.
So the, the agenda item is the resolution that would receive the feasibility report and call for the hearing on the improvement. Is there any objections when receiving the report and calling for the hearing?
I make that motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 11. This is, consider the resolution in support of the Highway 23 concrete materials of, in the Pipestone to Russell overlay. I want to make just a comment before we get into this. The, I have a role in coordinating the Highway 23 coalition, and Highway 23 coalition has chosen not to take a position on this one way or the other, because I feel it's not within their, their mission to determine what materials that Min Dutch should use on their roads. So for that reason, and to avoid any potential conflict, I'm, will be abstaining from any discussion or vote on this. And I've asked Councilmember De Kramer, as President of Pro Tem, that should this resolution pass, that, that he be the signatory on that. With that, Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think the resolution is pretty straightforward. It is a desire of the Pipestone County Board of Commissioners to request concrete versus a simple mill and overlay for this particular section of Highway 23. And their desire also includes that if it takes additional time to secure funding, that they would be in support of doing that. Likewise, for the city of Marshall, you know, I think our focus has been on lane miles and, and getting product from Marshall down south to Interstate 90. The type of surface may not be that critical, specific to the city of Marshall. However, we do want to support momentum for improvements to Highway 23. Lyon County, I believe, is going to take this resolution up next week, and believe that there will be support. And so I don't see any negative side to the city of Marshall supporting this resolution by the adoption tonight.
Open up for discussion. John?
Just some question on that, maybe just some background on that. I know from, I believe the city of Pipestone has gone to all concrete on all their city streets, primarily for, you know, life expectancy of the concrete versus the asphalt. Is that, you know, the basis of this request, or what's the background on why?
I don't, I don't think it necessarily relates that much to the city of Pipestone. The city of Pipestone has a, I think, two concrete providers in the city, and that may have some influence on their decision to go with concrete in the city of Marshall. It's a little bit different, and we do have to look at the economics of it maybe a little bit closer. My understanding is there's one commissioner whose district this entails, who's, he's really supportive of concrete, and he has built support around this particular notion to have concrete between Pipestone and Russell. Again, I don't know if you've driven that section recently, probably the biggest issue is that there's a big pothole on the bridge by Russell, and definitely there looks like there does need to be some need for improvement. But certain sections of Highway 23 right now are, are concrete, certain sections are not. DOT really makes that decision on traffic load, and even with our Highway 19 project in, within the city, they've indicated to us, certain sections may be asphalt, and certain sections may be concrete. So we kind of have deferred to them on surfacing, but again, this is really just kind of a request to show support, a local request in that support. And I, I don't think there's any negative to, to doing, to adopting the resolution, so.
Any other discussion?
I guess my question, I mean, I'm assuming you can't answer this, but it says that, you know, they will wait till they can get federal funding to, to do the project. Could that be another eight, 10 years? I mean, do we kick the can down the road, and that road just gets rougher? Some of the travels that way quite often now. I hate to see the road get worse, and we're still pushing this out five years. So we signed this resolution, outside of 2030, 2035, and we have a road that's in horrible condition, I mean, to our interstate, connecting Marshall to the interstate.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, and I think that, you know, I appreciate supporting other community efforts and other, but I, again, I think that this is out of our lane. I believe that we carry a lot of weight when we stay in our lane. When we're out of our lane, we can create a lot of damage. And I think out of respect to all the parties involved, I'd love to see a concrete, but I think that's out of our lane, and I think it's inappropriate for us to make a recommendation either way. I would just as soon have this die for the lack of a motion in a second.
And I would concur with that. Any other input? Then I will ask, is there a motion? And I need to ask that twice more. Is there a motion? And is there a motion? Hearing no motion and having asked three times, that issue dies because of the lack of a motion. So that means that we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 12, which is consider the appointments to the various boards and commissions, bureaus, and authorities. Earlier this evening, the council did meet and based on interviews that were held, I would make the following recommendation, that Amy Stush be appointed to her first term on the library board, and Spencer Wang be appointed as the student representative, that is a one-year term, on the Community Services Advisory Board. I've offered that as a recommendation and entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? We'll move to a vote. And motion, we'll close the voting. And motion passes. We'll move then to Commission Board liaison reports. From my standpoint, the Southwest Regional Development Commission has their monthly meeting on Thursday of this week. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Southwest Damage or Sports Commission met at noon today. Sharon and I were in attendance.
Sharon and I were in attendance. There's a lot of really good stuff going on. Maha, or MABA, the Marshall Amateur Baseball Association rep, talked about they have three tournaments coming up this spring. Two of them are already full. They're eighteen, eight-team tournaments, two-day events, and average of five of the eight teams are from far enough away that they're, you know, gonna be doing at least one, if not two, overnights. They're pretty excited about the season coming, and they said the eight teams is about what they can handle with what they have. They're not quite prepared and think that they're maybe ready to do a two-facility, split-facility tournament, but pretty excited about that, and then.
Craig, good night. Can I interrupt?
Sure.
Where will that be held? Will it be held on the new fields?
No, well, I think two of them could be in the one, the older kids, they can't get 90-foot bases on the new ones, so those will be at the Independence Park, but the other ones will be both, I believe. So they're pretty excited about it, and I think that's a good effort. I think MABA's been one of the solid partners with Southwest Amateur Sports, and, you know, they're feeling pretty good about where things are at. We also talked about some other exciting things coming up on the, on the board that there's involvement in, and of course, they're excited. Some of the reps there also sit on the convention and visitors bureau, and they're excited about candidates for that, so they'll be interviewing and hopefully have a good candidate and offer and fill that position and continue that to move forward. And then Josh Johnson sent me a good update on Maha, because one of the things that I pushed on is that maybe we need to hear more about what's happening out there. So I have just a number of bullets, bear with me, I'd like to go through. Maha is gonna host the Van Amme Regional Tournament again this year, and that's handed out by Minnesota Hockey, and Minnesota Hockey and the teams that participate have been extremely happy about the way Marshall and the Red Baron Arena and Expo host their tournaments. So they're gonna lobby to get as many of those regional tournaments as possible here. The Mite and Mini Mite Tournament will be March 6th through the 8th, and they're gonna host 48 teams. Forty-eight teams of Mites and Mini Mites, okay? And they've got teams from South Dakota and Iowa. They also wanted to say a hats off to the staff, city staff, arena staff during the Pee-wee tournament. Of course, that was over the weekend with the blizzard. They only had one team not show up, and the facility was operational and parking lots were being maintained as well as cleaned early morning during a weekend, during a weekend blizzard. The visitors were super impressed by the facility and how smooth everything was being operated. City-Maha staff partnership shined. Of course, we're currently renegotiating the ice time contract, and I won't, I mean, we covered that pretty extensively at our last meeting, so hopefully as Maha moves forward, they'll be able to finish that and execute their part of that contract. The Zambones ordered, they're wrapping up on their regular season with district play and regional play, and then they're ramping up for the summer training and clinic offerings and summer ice rentals. And then they're working with community services to offer concession stands on the lower level, which is a big improvement or a big change to come out there to the Red Baron. In addition to the fixed concession on the second level, they're going mobile, and they think that's a good opportunity for Maha to experiment and refine their concession offerings during the expo season and with Marshall Community Service events, and they think that's just another great partnership. So they're pretty excited about it. Just as a little hint to where Josh is, he says aloha to the council. That's all I have. Thank you.
Craig?
Okay, I just, since you brought up Maha, there's a vote out there for an ice rink in Minnesota Wild. I know I voted for it, but I'm not familiar with it. I don't know if you can touch on that so we can get our citizens to vote for it.
You know, I, yeah, and it's, you go on, on the Marshall Amateur Hockey Facebook site, and there's a link to the, to the Minnesota Wild, and it's a partnership between the Wild and the NHL, I believe.
And US Bank.
And US Bank, that's right. And it's not the rink that we've talked about building next to the arena, it's kinda more of an enhanced backyard rink, which may have a different home in Marshall to add to that. So I don't think the decision has been made, but I mean, we are ahead in the state. There are eight sites in Marshall. When I looked this morning, we were at 22,600-something votes. Duluth is about 2,200 behind us as of this morning. You can vote once a day per device, okay? So just saying, once a day per device.
So if you have six computers, you can vote six times.
It's, it's just like being in Chicago, vote early and vote often. So I'm just saying, this is the one place, it's legal and expected, but yeah, Marshall's rocking the vote. We're, we are way ahead of the other communities. And I just wanna remind Jim, this is probably the only other thing besides Highway 23 that links Marshall and Duluth, as we might be the two towns to get one of these Wild US Bank rinks. But anyway, that's all in, in good spirit, so it's gotta be a good thing, get on, get after it, vote, vote early and often, and, and the voting is over, I think, the end of the day on the 13th, I believe. So go on even Friday, if they'll still let you vote Friday, vote anyway. That's all I have.
Thank you, Craig.
Yeah, thank you.
Steve?
Mine have not met.
And Glenn?
Housing Commission met yesterday, and we received our audit report, and it was a favorable report. And then we also received an update from the company that's doing our website development. That's all.
John?
Mine have not met. And oh, by the way, the vote right now is 25,860, and, you know, these are all different computers, so these, you know, after the meeting, you could vote, so just, just saying.
And Russ?
Library Board met yesterday. One of the things that was on the agenda, they talked about security, not only for Marshall, but the other locations in the county, and they're talking about installing panic buttons in, in some of those areas, because of the fact that usually the librarian or that employee is there all by themselves. So in addition to looking at Marshall for security, we're looking at the other facilities as well. They're looking at installing a dishwasher in the community room, because of the fact that they're checking out toys and they have to sanitize the toys, so they wanna put a dishwasher in the community room, which will probably benefit that room for use as more time, so. CVB, that I don't think from the library board, and CVB and police have not met, so.
Jim?
Mine have not met.
We'll move then to councilmember individual items. Craig, Mr. Aaron, you're in.
Just hats off to the community, the public works folks. We had a pretty healthy storm, thank goodness it wasn't the heart attack snow, but it was still an awful lot of snow, and the community driving around. People are taking the sidewalk serious, and they're cleaning out the ADA ramps going on and off on their curb corners. I know that's a lot of work right now, those are really hard to do in the wintertime, but people keep, keep up with that. I think just watching, you know, the fact that most of the people are walking on the sidewalk and not on the street is, is really critical. Those banks are getting high, so everybody should just slow down and be careful at the intersections and look out for tomorrow, the big wind is coming.
Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I too would like to comment on the sidewalks, since we're talking about sidewalks, there are many that are not taken care of or maintained, so I would encourage people to do that. It is an ordinance and a regulation. The other thing that I think we need to start thinking about, again, when we look towards the future, Minnesota has named us a biking community, so when we look at changing roads and doing that, putting a bike path on the side of the road versus in the road is always a good idea, as a bike driver, so I'm in favor of that. And then there's just a lot of things to think about. People have come to me about all sorts of what sounds like goofy ordinances, but chickens in town, no roosters, but chickens. Minneapolis does it, they do it, Minneapolis can do it, maybe we should think about it. And that's about it.
Thank you, Steve. Glenn?
I have nothing.
Jim?
I really have nothing, but I do agree with you, Steve, that the chicken ordinance is something that's been brought to me too, and we've brought it up for three years, I think it is time to take a look at it. And it's not just Minneapolis. I bet you 50% of cities in Minnesota allow chickens in town.
So do we let eggs in first, or the chicken?
I have no comment, Mr. Councilmember Schaefer.
That's all. And Russ?
I guess I would just like to echo what a couple of other council members have said about the snow, and, and the crews did an absolutely fantastic job, as far as I'm concerned, and when time permitting, would ask them maybe to push back the snow on the intersections a little bit, especially the heavily traveled intersections, you know. I know there's, I've, somebody's made mention to me where Glenn sells, where the taxi business is now on Greeley Street, that when you're going, right, taking a right on College, it's hard to see traffic coming from that side, and it's really not a city problem, but it's an issue there with visibility. But again, I can't, I have to compliment city staff, because I didn't expect my street to be plowed on Sunday afternoon, and it was plowed, so they did a great job. That's all I have.
John?
Well, my only comment on the snow is I'm looking forward to spring, so I don't think that's gonna come this week, but I'm looking forward to it. What I would like to say is took part in the, or was able to attend the Cultures on the Prairie event that took place today, and I know our community service and some of the staff were very instrumental in getting that going, along with SMSU and a few other groups. Very well attended. I think last year, when they had the cultures event, it was like 45 attended. This year, the numbers I heard was over 135, so very well attended, very good event, very informational, and well worth the time. Now, you, you wanna talk about, you know, one of our speakers, and, you know, we had two speakers there attending from the city with Kyle and Bob talking about the census, and, you know, comment a little earlier was, yes, they did get a standing ovation at the end. Had really nothing to do with the fact that it was just before lunch and everybody got up to eat lunch, so.
Well, thank you, John. And the Cultures on the Prairie, that was a good conference. I think the, we commend the organizers. There was a committee of interested people representing a variety of groups, including SMSU and the city, and it was really coordinated. Auto Community Services, I think Amanda Beckler receives, you know, should receive a lot of accolades for her work in doing a lot of that primary organization, so good conference, but more importantly, it's a, it's an important issue as this community continues to grow and values the, the contributions of people that are coming to this community from a variety of different cultures, as has always been Marshall's history. As a number of other councilmembers have mentioned, the good work of the street department and parks department in clearing the snow, I would echo those. I think we have, it just shows we have very good employees, dedicated employees that have very good equipment to do the job that needs to be done in a fairly short amount of time. It's, they have a lot of miles to cover, and they really got it all done from when that snow stopped, which was near daylight, and they were done by about the time that the sun set on Sunday, so, which is, which is really quite a feat, given that we had 12 inches of snow. Like John, I'm looking forward to no more snow and a slow melt of the snow.
Slow melt.
Because I think we all, you know, need to start looking at our emergency plans on, you know, when the, there's a lot of moisture on the surface, there was a lot of moisture trapped in the soil going into, into the winter, so we'll once again need to be kind of vigilant about how the spring runoff will happen and how that will impact the Redwood River as well as downstream. With that, we'll move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and council, just a few follow-ups to some of the discussion. One other item that was mentioned at the sports commission meeting this afternoon was that the next meeting they'll have in, they have invited the soccer group to have discussion with, with that particular commission as well to, I know they've made some, had some interest in participating, and we do wanna be inclusive of their needs and, and see where, where that, that goes. I know that they have a need for facilities and, and practice and things like that, and some of the councilmembers here have expressed that to us, so we, we do wanna kinda build a relationship there and see what we can do for them. And I apologize to councilmember Meister on the chicken ordinance, I think he has brought this up for as long as I've been here, and I apologize we haven't gotten to it, but we'll, we'll schedule this LNO to look at that. I do know there's some history with the city looking at that and, and some feedback, so we'll make sure that the LNO kinda knows some of that history as well. The, I do wanna provide a brief update on City Hall. We anticipate that by the end of next week, the asbestos abatement project will be completed, and at that time, we'll do a final inspection and give a potential notice to proceed to Brennan to start their side of the work on the 24th of February. We'll just kinda see, kinda where we're at at that point. We anticipate that once we give notice to Brennan, obviously the major portion of that that starts first is the demolition of, of the main floor, so we'll keep you updated. I, I suspect at that point, people will remember that we have a City Hall project, and you might get some comments back, and, and it might be some disruption in the alley and in front of City Hall, although I'm, I'm assuming that Glenn Olson will do what he can to minimize that impact. And I know we've talked a little bit about the City Hall Committee, just still having that in place for feedback, so we'll schedule a meeting shortly on that, too. We have had staff meet with an audiovisual company to talk about different displays. There's been a lot of advancement in how we work. The existing City Hall obviously was out of date, and it led to inefficiencies, and we believe that if we can spend some money on, on better meeting room capabilities technology-wise, will increase our productivity, so we'll get some feedback on that. The other thing that we're working on is, someone mentioned security. We're actually gonna meet with a local business here in town to talk about security for, for City Hall. It was not in the bid documents, and that was known, and that was a couple reasons. One is, you know, in-house for Engen, they didn't have a security consultant, so to speak, and I believe time was a factor here, too. And what it did is, it probably helped the bid, the amount of the bid, but for us, there's an advantage. We have some control over who we use, and it may facilitate a local bid, local contractor in providing us, and that's, that's kind of a really good thing in this particular project, 'cause we weren't successful at having all local contractors in the City Hall project, so hopefully we can help a little bit there. I do wanna talk a little bit about branding, and what we're anticipating now, I've found a bunch of meetings on it recently, and I apologize for not making some other ones. We're really close to finalizing this, and what we're anticipating right now, we're gonna do our City of Marshall brand launch at the State of the City address, and we'll do it following the, the presentation by the mayor and I, and we've said repeatedly from the beginning, this isn't about just the logo and the colors and the tagline, and for a non-marketing person like myself, although I'm fully in support of this project, along with our corporate partners, once you kinda see the support that's built around the logo and the tagline, it, it really makes sense. And I also kinda wanna comment, we've had a lot of private, private support for this. So I think it isn't, we spent public money on it, but I hope we continue to have that support from the private. We need ownership of this, not only from the city, but the school and SMSU, that's really key, too, and a lot of the brand kinda relates to, to them, based on our research data. So I'm looking forward to that wrapping up. And we will try, what we're gonna do is, before March 4th, 4th, we're gonna make sure that council members and staff are, get to preview this, and they get to see it first. And so we'll be scheduling some time, time with you. I might have to do it one or two council members at a time. I don't wanna have a special meeting for it, and then staff will get that worked in, so I'll be in contact with you on that. And then finally, I did include in the packet the, the strategic plan draft, and this has been a little longer than anticipated, but that way we did have more community input into it as well. It's, it's not really just, it's not an operational strategic, strategic plan, it's, it really is like more of a community plan, where we're including, including things that are outside, maybe direct services that we provide, a lot of collaboration work that's included in the strategic plan. We started in April of last year, we, we had the staff council meet in August, followed by the World Cafe, followed by another session with staff and council in November, and then another public comment period through the chamber. the chamber just recently. And I do want to kind of add, I, I, I think the document is important, not only for kind of setting direction, but it, and, and the goals, but when the council adopts it, you know, some of the items that are in there will be brought back to council. And with the adoption, it kind of gives us permission to work on it, to work on some of the items. And, and I'll just kind of mention a few of the things that are in there because you may not look at it all. But obviously, we want to talk about the community pool, which is a priority for the, for the city in this upcoming year. You know, there's a lot of community service type functions that are part of this, too. I have mentioned in there establishment of a public or private campground, which we've had some comments back about. Should the city explore adopting a park program, which some other communities have? Should the city, and this is in our strategic plan, explore an indoor play area, which has been another consideration because of winter and, and some concerns about lack of activities in the, in the winter months. Economic development, which is a big key, we have in there engaging with the mall ownership, re-engaging. I know that there's been some past work on that. But a highly commented sector of economic development need is, is the mall. Updating our housing study, updating the hotel study. They do have a shelf life. They get pulled off the shelf and when there's an expiration date on there in terms of the data, we do need to continue to update that. Updating a comparable, our comprehensive land use plan. Should the city explore producing an annual report? I know that in the admin brief, community services has provided an admin or an annual report year-end. A lot of good information in there. We could do that citywide. Establishment of a tax competitiveness lobbying group with business leaders. We are at a disadvantage, obviously with our border states. And, you know, do we need to put some effort into that to equalize, equalize what we have for economic development? So I just kind of throw some of those things that are in there. So, and we'll cover it in more detail. If I knew the agenda was going to be short, so short tonight, I should have maybe done a more full-length presentation tonight, but need a little bit more time. But I'm going to bring it back on the, the last meeting in February, which I, is that a shorter meeting, Kyle, on that one? Or is that a?
It'll be a recent conference.
So that's the plan. And I just wanted to provide an update to the council on that and it is included in your packet. So that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Any questions for Sharon? Jason?
Snow removal, like you all have kind of touched on, went fairly well, we think. We'll take a look at some of those areas of concern that were brought up. Building departments working in earnest with RT Vision for new software for building permits and kind of got a sneak peek today at what they've got so far. And we're pretty excited about it, but that's a long time out yet, but just something we're, we're getting excited about. And I don't think I've got anything else.
And Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The sale of city-owned property to the Minnesota Municipal Association, that 17-acre parcel, all of the closing documents are at the title closing company. Hopefully everything will be approved tomorrow and then payment will be made to the city for that sale. The lease agreement between the city and Maha that we discussed last meeting, that draft has gone out to the, to Maha for them to review and get back any comments to me if they have any, but I think they'll act on it at their, I believe they said there is no meeting in February, but they wouldn't be meeting on it in March. So that's out there. And we approved that airport training facility in the lease, subject to the correct insurance being provided. And we're trying to track down that insurance. The insurance certificate's been requested. And one comment, one person said, well, I've already delivered it to the city, but we can't find it. So we're not sure it's been delivered, but we're looking for it. So we'll meet with the insurance agent tomorrow to see if we can get that correct certificate.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. The next agenda items include the administrative brief. Any questions about that? And the information items, including the building permits. Is there anything else to come forward this evening? If not, identity and motion.
So moved. John?
Motion by John, seconded by Jim?
Sure, I seconded.
Seconded by Jim. To adjourn discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And motion passes. We're adjourned.
Kids are slow today.